And have to determine if the application is valid or not. If it gives us information that's not valid, then they'll have to reapply.
Is there gonna be a process by which we would work with them to help them understand that? Or is it gonna be like doing a planning its own and deal where we just?
I don't know. We're gonna, we're gonna work with them. Our goal is if they're in a glitch and they're working so well, this is what you need to do. Try to work them through the process and also working through the process in the next step back.
Other question. Yeah, Don, this is Cole. I got a quick question. I'm, I wanna be the devil's advocate here. So when, when you start to consider these people who, you know, will receive monies, can you look at was their business solid and liquid? Or, you know, was it on the last leg to go under? Or, and also are you gonna take into consideration the loss of business from the rebuilding of Main Street? And kind of separate all that out before you make your decision?
Now, the ordinance itself sets out for some very specific criteria, which I'll read. The criteria to be considered for a grant is much of the experience of area economic impact due to the pandemic. It shall be located in the corporate limits of the city. It should have operating, uh, have been operating in the village for at least six months prior to the date of the application. Not be indebted to the village. It must be registered with the controller's office. It's a sales tax revenue generating business. Be on the current sales tax rem, be current on sales tax rem. Be authorized to do business and be in good standing with the state of Texas. Shall remain in good standing with the state of Texas and the United States. And be, be a business that is specifically located in the village, that is open to public, and is not a home-based business, national, national chain or not. And the eligibility guide, that's criteria to make the application. The eligibility guidelines are proof of the after the ownership of the business, three months of estimated loss revenue or documented lost evidence, Texas Comptroller's, public accounts, sales tax receipts for months of March through April, a copy of the current business license, a copy of the driver's license, our government issued identification, the completed and signed form of mind for the supplemental application. Application that, that was part of, that's part of the ordinance. It also gives you some additional information they will need to provide on the business. Where it talks about employee information and those types of things, or how many employees before, how many now, this type of thing. So, uh, it's, it's intended to try to provide a kind of a behind the kitchen door look for business. Uh, and to make sure that, uh, you know, we, we have, we have somebody who is a valid and qualified individual who will see the money.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Why are we asking about number of employees before and after?
I think the reason we do that is to try to show their harm, to show their impact. Because in a lot of these situations, these people have left off employees. And it's simply to try to demonstrate that, that it suffered damage.
Do you have a, you have a calculation on what the total impact is to us from a sales tax standpoint?
Yeah, we have, it's, you know, what, what we put in here, you know, as far as, as far as the cap, you know, is we, we built in the ordinance itself, a vision, talks about how much we think we would potentially be paying out in the situation. I don't think we'll be there. I think we put a number in there somewhere in the ballpark of, uh, oh, I think it was like eighty thousand dollars along those lines. And we based that on last year's sales tax data, uh, and the thought process that we may have a complete loss. We're thinking the number's probably gonna be closer to fifty thousand dollars since we're only doing two months. Uh, we obviously, as we pointed out at the last meeting, we came out better half as far as our March sales tax goes. We were expecting a greater impact on that. There's no question that our next sales tax check has significantly impacted, uh, because obviously the month of April was down. But we think probably you're gonna be in the ballpark of two thousand. Uh, we put a higher cap just to cover our base, so we're going to go back and make people wait. But, you know, it, it's probably getting forty-five to fifty thousand.
Do we have a drop date date on when they have to apply by? Can we cut the deposit off?
Uh, we, we really, I don't know that we do, to be honest with you.
I, I think I'd like to see something that they submit their application, that we don't take applications after maybe September one or something like that. Kind of, I mean, I wanna give them time to do what they need to do, but I don't wanna, it, it's not like it needs to be an ongoing thing for the next year.
Right.
You know, here's the opportunity, here's what you guys probably need, let's get it done, let's move on.
Absolutely. I think it's a great idea.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Don, can you, can you walk me sort of through the process? Say, uh, for example, that I have a, uh, business on Main Street, and I've been impacted. And so I go, come over to the city and I get the forms, and I go and fill them out, and I've lost two employees and, you know, my revenue's down seventy percent. And, you know, just for an example, and I turn it in to you. And then what happens? Who makes the determination and, and how much money do I get back? Uh, you know, you know, uh, how does that process work once, once the vendor has done everything that they're required?
The, the ordinance grants me as administrative authority to make that determination. So what I would do, Mike, is I would take their application. I pull out the state data that I have to ship them up state paid in. I validate that as verified. Once we determine they've met the criteria, once we determine they're up for refund, we then will automatically issue a notice for payment. And then our people will issue a check, we'll get it signed and get it back. So, uh, it, it should be more than, really, more than about a week process.
A week process?
Yeah, probably a week, week to ten days at the most, I would think, but probably a week.
And then, then will you come back in and report to us about, you know, how much, where we are in the program? How much we've dispersed and, and that we'll be getting another date on that like every board meeting?
Every board meeting, yes, sir.
Make sure their numbers aren't, uh, getting away from us?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, please? Well, Don, if I understand this correctly, the burden of proof is going to be on the owner of the business. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
And Rodney, that date, the date you'd like to, to add in this, the kill date would be September one, you said?
I, I'm thinking about that. I'm looking probably at September thirtieth. Let's make it, that's the end of our fiscal year, right?
Yeah, yes.
So, I mean, if we, if we just don't take applications past September thirtieth, then that would be all in that fiscal year. And then, obviously, if you get an application on the twenty-ninth of September, that's gonna be fulfilled. But that'll be wrapped up hopefully in the last first couple of weeks of October. And you can still backdate that into your previous fiscal year's numbers in, in, we could wash our hands and move away.
I think the good cut, that's a great cutoff date.
Other questions, please? If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance as, as discussed with the application deadline date being, uh, September thirtieth, twenty twenty. And the city administrator being, uh, charged with administering the program and reporting to the board on a monthly basis as to its, um, progress.
Motion's been made, so I'm gonna pick this up and now.
Question?
Question has been called. Rodney, yes or no?
Aye.
Amber, yes or no?
Yes.
John Cole, yes or no?
Yes, sir.
Michael, yes or no?
Yes.
No, I apologize, Mayor, I meant to say yes, I'm sorry.
All right, here we go. We're gonna do discussion and possible action number six. A, discuss and consider possible action regarding a proposed memorandum of understanding relating to the anticipated designation of a critical habitat for the Salado Salamander.
Yeah, Mayor, we, we kinda kept you up to date. We had a brief, as you know, a couple of meetings ago from Dirk regarding, uh, the upcoming designation in August, the critical habitat for the Salado Salamander. As you know, they will, they will, Fish and Wildlife will issue a designation in August. And then there'll be a public comment period before a, a finalization occurs on that. An area of concern that we talked about during that briefing, and I think you, producer's been moving forward in this direction. An area of concern was the fact that the initial footprint of the designation was what they might be considering from documentation way back from the beginning. Uh, we're concerned that maybe the footprint of that designated habitat may be a little far-reaching question based on our science, uh, being as big as an area that they're showing. So there was discussion about the idea of maybe visiting with Fish and Wildlife prior to the designation. Um, and since, since we apparently have some standing because of our science that we have. And then, and the ordinance put the Fish and Wildlife prior to their release in August, uh, footprint. The Coalition has met a couple of times, meaning, uh, Mr. Whitson, uh, Dirk with the Groundwater District himself. Uh, and we've met with a consulting group at NRS, uh, who, who Dirk made with the process. And we've talked to them about what, what we would need to do to give Fish and Wildlife before this designation occurs. And, and also, you know, what's happened after that process and what kind of curve Mark needs after that process. Um, they provided a scope of work, uh, along with the budget for that scope of work, and they can talk about this. Uh, the footwork for, uh, all three phases. Uh, and one being clearly the document and getting the fish ahead of time. Uh, it's been about forty thousand dollars as far as the total cost of organization. And then depending on what we do after the proposed designation, whether it be the creation of a, uh, of a proposed rule, or actually review and offering comments and discussion regarding the proposed designation. Uh, that's going to be another hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, we expressed, myself expressed concern in the discussion that we need to take this one step at a time. Number one, uh, we all have limited budgets. But number, but number two, uh, you know, we don't know what's gonna come up in August, what's gonna come out in August. Uh, so probably not prudent at this stage in the game to make a commitment of what happens after August. The primary commit, uh, the primary desire is to get, get before Fish by now and try to limit, uh, the scope of the, the designated area. So, uh, we, we had discussions about that. There was discussion about Williamson County. I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, but Williamson County might have interest in partnering with us because, you know, science has shown that population, uh, of, of Williamson County area. Judge Blackburn has worked very closely trying to bridge the gap of some of the differences that occurred over the years between Williamson County and Bell County. And he's had discussions with the, about this. Uh, the feeling is that Williamson County warned us it would be maybe under a separate agreement than that, which we're talking about tonight. Uh, but, uh, those discussions are open. Uh, and, and, you know, I, I think they're, they're not, they're not closed at this point as far as Williamson County entertaining that. Talking about working with us on the issue. That said, uh, what might is a proposed bendum or amendment, if you will, to our current agreement that the Coalition has among the various parties. Those parties being us, we're also the Salado Water Supply Corporation, Groundwater District, and Bell County. Uh, but this is a, an amendment to that current agreement that we have, where we already are pitching in five thousand dollars to go towards science and, and study of populations for development. But basically, we've amended that, that current agreement to include funding for phase one of this work with, with NRS. That forty thousand dollar piece that would involve, uh, preparation documentation, that would involve, uh, potentially a public meeting for facilitation of property owners. Uh, that would involve, uh, the face time with Fish and Wildlife and giving homework behind that. Uh, we think that cost is pretty, our share at this stage of the game, the way it's, at the judge, the judge, if, if the fund is split, it's costed possible four ways. Uh, between us, the Land Water District and the county. Uh, and our share of, of phase one would be ten thousand dollars. Uh, we've already allocated, you know, five thousand dollars for the science piece. So this would be an additional ten thousand dollars for a total of, a contribution of ten thousand, or fifteen thousand dollars. The Water Supply Corporation's position is they match what we do. So, uh, like we, they're, they're putting five thousand dollars in for the science like we are. I talked with, uh, Mr. Preston, the Water Supply Corporation, and he says they'll continue to match. And so, you know, whether it be ten thousand, whether it be six thousand, whatever. But our, our recommendation is that we go in, ten each. Uh, and county gets ten, and the Groundwater District goes ten for the first phase. And all equal partners in on this particular situation. Uh, time is of essence. We've gotta get our stuff together, uh, with, with the consultant and get before Fish and Wildlife, before August. Uh, so that's why I sent for you tonight for consideration. Uh, we think ten dollars is, ten thousand dollars is, is a reasonable amount. We have money, we, we have in the budget, that can, that can cover that, cover that map, uh, to, to get our, our piece of representation. Uh, the county has already allocated, their funding, the Groundwater District has allocated their funding. I understand that we need to get in on this first phase. Uh, I don't know, it's a different name, or we're gonna, we're gonna put the other hundred and sixty thousand in after, after the designation. I'll take this one step at a time. But it's for you tonight, your consideration.
Questions, please, Mr. Johnson?
Don, I don't understand why we need to consult it to synthesize data that we already own. So we own the information. We have the ability to go consult directly with you, with Fish and Wildlife, um, in partnership with Texas Parks and Wildlife, which we have done before. I mean, the mayor and I, um, years ago went up there and had a sit-down meeting, it was hugely successful. And so I'm just not sure why we need to pay these consultants an additional forty thousand dollars. Like I said, they're just synthesizing information that currently exists. So they're not, it's not additional research, um, that we're approving on this deal. And I feel like, um, this is something that can be staffed really easily between, um, among the parties that are already involved. And we could still get the same tools, um, without having a middleman or a consultant in there. I mean, do you agree or is there, do you feel like that's a possibility?
I think, you know, to be honest with you, Amber, I think this money well spent. And, and I hear, I hear exactly what you're saying, and you add that. But the feeling is that from a timing standpoint, and then the time we're up against. And with the experience that this group has in dealing with these type of issues. And, and they understand the concept of funding, uh, this information. We think that they could probably do it far more effectively than we'd be able to do and get the message through at this point. After this first step, I don't know. And I, I don't, I, I'm, you know, I have some concerns about the, 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 after the pre-submission, uh, representation piece. But I, I don't wanna be negative on that because as a group, uh, kind of, kind of fit it together. We talked to Dirk and, and, and Blackburn, and I think the feeling is that these guys are specialists in this, and we're up against a timeline from a standpoint of being able to get important, important leave. And I think it probably makes sense as opposed to, to us going in there and, you know, not having, not having done something like this before.
Don, I think that Amber has made a very, uh, a very good point because heaven knows what we have, we didn't sit around that table and offer whatever we had to offer. Is there a group that would sit down with us and just talk about, we have information? Is it good? Is it right? Will you accept it? Is there a possibility of that even with a, a very narrow timeline?
Well, that's, that's what would be happening is this, this consultant, and we're not necessarily gonna launch the consultant. Consultants, we'll be with the consultant in discussions. We'll be with the consultant at the table with them. Uh, but, but they've worked that process, uh, you know, before, and they understand the, the inner workings of, of the designation process, uh, which I think is new to some of the parties at the table here. Uh, I think that we're comfortable with our science. We, we believe in our science, Amber's right. We have dirt science. Uh, we just think that there's a benefit to having this group go through the compilation process of all the science and the data. They understand the inner workings with Williamson County and some of the designations up there. Uh, a far more effective approach. It's a complicated issue, and it's not just, not just, it's not, can't really be my act. You, you have to look, you literally have to look broad scale on this issue because you've got a number of competing interests in this equation. Uh, and, and we feel that we need to capitalize and suspend and do it right and not misfire it all possible.
I know one thing that we do have is, Amber, I think it's about a seventy thousand dollar report we had to do? Where they brought out investigating teams and everything? Is that all right?
Right, so that was conducting additional research. And, um, that was specifically because we were across the creek, there were some car stick features. We had to do some ERT, um, and look at what the car's features looked like underground because we couldn't see, you know? So, um, that was money well spent because we got with the, the group at the time and decided that it was, uh, it was, that was money well spent because we were gonna be able to gather new data to know what the land was like basically underneath the creek. So when we boarded the creek, um, we wouldn't hit any caverns and actually lose the creek. Because, you know, if you think about it, you drill a hole in the middle of a creek, then there's a hole down there. You're gonna lose your creek, it's gonna go under the hole. And, um, we could have potentially lost Salado Creek. We didn't wanna do that. So, we, um, we did all the ERT, uh, study ahead of time. That, that was out of a cost. But the consulting side of it, um, I'm ju, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm on the fence, I bet, I'm, I'm just really concerned that that forty thousand dollars could be better spent elsewhere because we already have the research. So just simply submitting the research and a map that we all agree on is really what I was suggesting the first time. Is coming up with, um, a better, you know, up creek or upstream versus downstream, um, you know, impacts and drawing, um, a, a map that made more sense based on our existing research that we can all thumb through and look at. Um, you know, I'd be happy to sit down with a couple of people and draw a line on the map. But, um, especially, I think the Coalition could, you know, we could literally take a map and draw a picture. Um, does it say as much as a consultant with thirty, forty, fifty years of experience? No, not, I'm not really, uh, familiar with the consultants, I don't know exactly how many years they've been doing this. But, um, I would definitely caution spending that much money on the front end when after this designation happens, we're also going to be spending money on the other side of it, um, dealing with the fallout from, um, having a critical habitat designation, which we know we're going to have. We know that is gonna be designated. We just are trying to say that we want a smaller area that makes more sense in a larger area.
Any questions, Mr. Johnson?
I think you've got the commitments from the county and, and the Groundwater District. Uh, for the Water Supply Corporation's also expressed interest in matching whatever we do. Our feeling is, is that, that, uh, this is, this is probably the biggest opportunity we've got, try to minimize the.
Three o'clock.
And, uh, you know, we, we think it's probably the best. I see Bobby, you're on, you're on the panel meeting, and if you don't wanna bring into the discussion, but Bobby's been part of our discussions, uh, you know, regarding particular issue. Mr., can you hear us? You're commuted right now. I listen, I listen on, uh, so Amber, I mean, I, I'm totally with you on your concerns. I think we've, we've worked with the Coalition, and I think that the Coalition has, has, has the feeling that this is probably a smart forward. Uh, my biggest concern is not the front, the upfront, because I think this upfront, it's very critical. I think it's critical that we do it right. Uh, from a timing standpoint, we literally are in a sixty-day window. My bigger concern is the after August. Because I don't know, I don't like to end up in litigation, uh, once the designation comes out. I think that's very, very likely because there are several competing interests in this thing. Uh, I think we have a unique opportunity to, to light a flame because we have standing when nobody else really has standing because we have the science that nobody else has. So that gives us potential access that nobody else has at this stage. So, we felt like going after, following a professional approach is, even though it costs some money, it's probably a smarter spend. I mean, I think the thing to understand about this is that the consultant probably has a better grip of the law regarding this than, than, uh, you know, than, than we do. I mean, we know the science, we've got the science. But I, I think the consultant has a more, has an approach and a stronger ability to tackle this thing in realistic fashion. He's probably.
Other comments or questions?
Is there a vetting process and a bid process as to who the consultant, who won the, the bid on the consultant?
Right, it's, it's a professional service agreement, so no. In this situation, there's not. This is a consultant that, uh, the Groundwater District has, has familiarity with, uh, that they brought to the table. And, uh, we all are comfortable with him.
That was just curious. We used a consultant last time, they, so, uh, you know, I was just wondering what the difference was.
Yeah, Don, I share Amber's concerns. I think that, um, that so, you know, we did promise that it's gonna be just a certain amount of money, then it's gonna be done, and it's a certain amount of money. So it just seems like that it just keeps expanding and snowballing. So I'd sort of like to, uh, put some brakes on this somehow until we can actually see, uh, what qualifications are the people that we're getting and, and exactly what's our product gonna be.
You know, from a standpoint of, of timing, that's the only, that's the only challenge we're up against. You know, I'm, I'm with you on that, Mike. It's, you know, we, we probably schedule, I don't think there'd be a comment we could schedule, maybe next week, maybe the consultant and get Judge Blackburn in. And, and we can have further discussion with them to make sure you're comfortable. We don't want you doing it and you're not comfortable. So if, if there's not a comfort level, uh, we wanna, you know, try to get you guys to where you are, if it's something you wanna do or not. Uh, would you rather do that and maybe see if we could schedule maybe Monday next, or Tuesday next week to, to get, uh, the Joes maybe together and bring the consultant in and let them have some discussion to get comfortable too?
I think, I think that Amber definitely has to be there because this is, you know, right up her alley. And so, uh, but I would, and I'm pretty.
I'm probably gonna be out on that day.
Yeah. Tuesday you're out, you said?
Yeah, I'm gonna have surgery that day.
Yeah, you are gonna be out that day.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking more along the lines of just having a vetting process. I mean, I know that there's a lot of parties who, um, have a, you know, a dog in this fight, so to speak. But I think the village is really the one that is gonna have the biggest, um, impacts. And so we really need to make sure that we are all on board with, um, who we hire. The, the consultant we hired as a village in the past did not see the job for us. And I think that, I'm not saying that we need to do a full-on solicitation for bids, but I mean, having a few things to look at, just fair prices, to make sure that forty thousand dollars is even fair, I think is, is a starting point because, you know, at the end of the day, we're looking at taxpayer dollars. I just don't wanna throw a number out there and, and it not even be competitive.
Sure, sure. Hey, and, you know, I did raise the question that you raised in the initial discussions on this. And there seemed to be a support mechanism from, from the other parties, but there's nothing wrong with that question. I think it's a fairly valid question.
Well, Don.
Hey, Amber. Hey, hey, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, please.
This, this is Cole. I got a question. Can I ask Amber a question?
Sure.
Hey, Amber? Based on your experience, and you have a lot more than I do at something like this, what are we, what are we gonna gain by using a consultant?
Well, I think that's my biggest question too, is, um, is, you know, I, I, I don't, I can't really tell you that at this point. So that's why I kind of need a little bit more information because my idea was for all of us to sit at a round table, um, the interested parties with the Coalition, and, um, take the subject matter experts that we already have and draw a map based on our best available science and submit it up to Fish and Wildlife and see if they would entertain a meeting based on that map. So I didn't really ever think of hiring a consultant to do that work. And, um, so I think that's my question too, is, uh, is how, how, how much is that gonna get us?
Well, I, I would say, I've gotten, Bobby, Bobby has chatted in, he says he does not have a microphone, he's listening. And what he's, what he's indicated, he said, I don't have a microphone, just listening up to the room. Uh, we don't, he says, we know the science, but we don't know the law. And the law will dictate who gets what they want out of the habitat designation. So again, that goes back to what I was talking about earlier and the fact that these people may have uh, more of an interesting understanding of, of the maneuvering process that needs to take place at this point, in that standpoint. Obviously, the, the, there's no question that the villagers, you know, have. Obviously, the, there's no question that the villagers, you know, has the most estate in this area. I mean, the habitat's gonna be sitting in large part within the city limits. So we've gotta be a player in some way, and we can't expect the county to, to carry in the ground, or district to carry the full freight, or the waterslide corporation to carry the full freight, or that, but we need to get to a comfort level that you all have, if you have, if you have discomfort.
But we have to remember too, that if we're looking at the law and what the law dictates, Fish and Wildlife attorneys are relatively accessible by the public, and especially, you know, villages and, you know, the folks at the coalition and stuff, we do have access to some opinion by their attorneys on the front end, and so, you know, we've got a little while to work with it, I know that as, as the process goes, it's not a long time, we really do need to get moving relatively quickly, but.
You've got sixty days, and that's it, you're, you're there until, you've got, you've got less than sixty days, we're coming up, we're coming up on below the sixty today, we know that.
Amber, when would you be up to a meeting, something similar to what Don just, just offered, when do you think you might be?
I'm, I'm available on Monday, and I'm saying by Wednesday I should be fine, I just have a, a procedure later in the, the day on Tuesday, so I may not feel like, it's on my throat, so I may not feel like talking, but Monday or Wednesday or Friday I'll be fine.
Okay. Do you, let me ask you, no, I hear you, so maybe Wednesday, maybe, maybe, maybe we look at Tuesday, because I think it's important that Amber's there.
Absolutely. So Don, what would you like from this? Do you want a motion to, to business, or do you want to just stay on until, until it's what you want done?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that that is, that's something that we need to, to look at scheduling a meeting for Wednesday, and maybe there's Wednesday, if you'd be available, but, in the day, would, would people be available around lunchtime on Wednesday? Bobby?
Will I?
Yeah.
No, I will not be available.
You want to go to Wednesday night, maybe?
That's fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
Fine, with me.
Okay. So we'll see, for trying to get the judge, trying to get the consultant in particular on the line, because Amber, your main thought just stays with vetting the consultant, right?
Don, where are you on this? Nicole, where are you?
Your call?
Can, can you do it Wednesday night?
Don?
Yes, yes, I can.
Okay, cool. So we're set, we're, we're set for Wednesday evening meeting?
Okay, what time?
Uh, let's, does six o'clock work for everybody?
That would be mean.
About, like, too early?
Yeah, that's too early to me.
Yeah, six o'clock maybe.
Six o'clock?
Six P M. this coming Wednesday, right?
Yeah.
Six o'clock this time?
Okay, okay, we're gonna be, we're gonna be virtual or face-to-face?
Virtual.
Yeah, okay.
Do you want a motion concerning that, Don, or you just want to carry out?
I would just continue the item until the special meeting is set for Wednesday.
Okay, so be it. Wednesday, eighteen hundred, and it will be virtual.
Yes.
Okay. Number B. Discuss and consider possible action regarding the prioritization of capital projects funded in the fiscal year 2020, Village of Suelo operating. Door is open for discussion, please, Don, you lead us.
Yes, sir, I just, it's before you tonight, before you tonight to discuss, we talked about doing this at the last meeting, we're bringing you the list of capital projects that remain in the budget, you know, for, for you to prioritize as, as we work through this COVID situation and monitor our expenditures, see where we can cut, and see where we can lessen the impact on our budget. Just to kind of go through the list of projects for the public certification, on the administrative side, we have a couple of very small, minor capital projects, we're looking to bind it to a public notice cabinet for City Hall that's bigger, so we can handle all of the notices, also, you know, the surge protector, that's.
Don, you, you broke up there, what, what?
Public notice cabinet, and then the other one is surge protector, the UPS for our server on public safety, we have fifteen thousand dollars, but that's already been deferred, we were able to get that payment moved in our, in our discussions regarding the lease agreement, lease purchase agreement for the, for you all authorized, we won't make a payment until next, this figure on that. The vehicle replacement program, we have five thousand dollars allocated to go into fund balance, that's an annual, we have one computer for seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, then we have two ticket riders for five hundred dollars. Public Works, we've got twenty-five hundred dollars set up for Park Landscaping, a large part of the capital piece is in the Public Works streets area, where we've got some sixty-eight thousand dollars, nine hundred, sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars, set aside for a street improvement that remains, and we have a restroom trailer for forty thousand dollars, we have a drainage project for seventeen-five, and we also have low water crossing repairs for a thousand five hundred, and that involves going in and replacing the teeth on the single lane low water cross. For a total capital expenditure of somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, we're well for that. So my next question to you would be tonight is, how would you prioritize these?
That's a great question. Feel free to answer it.
Let me ask some questions concerning, so, we've got, what, four months left in our budget cycle?
Yes, sir.
For this year? So, where are we at in relationship to the revenue that we perceive versus our expenses?
What's the financial report, we're, we're very, very well, Robbie, from, from that perspective, from the look up there.
I mean, the one that stands out to me is the restroom trailer, we could delay that and put that in the next year's budget as much as I want it and think we need it, given where we are today, pushing that to next year's budget would be a, an, an easy fix, I mean, that's, that's forty grand there. Question is, how much do we need to defer to break even?
You know, you're, you're, you're solid right now, but keep in mind, you've not hit, you've not hit the way that what we're just gonna hit next month, when we get the, the sales tax check, it could very well be a four-digit check. You know, we could be a four-digit dollar hit for what, what you would see in the month of April. So I think that's your starting point, and then to ramp up, you know, I, I would not expect to be very honest with you that your May check, it's gonna be greater, I think, a little bit than, than your April check, but it's not gonna be that much greater. I don't think you're gonna start to see some real sales tax money start rolling back in until we start realizing, uh, sales tax receipts from June to July, more than likely it's will be better, but July I think will be a true freeze. The revenue stream at this stage is, is good as we thought before, versus your expenses, so, but that's why the thought process is to go ahead and prioritize these, so start whittling, like you said, the rest, the rest, you know, the five thousand dollars for the capital vehicle replacement, that's not, that's not expenditure, that's an allocation for future payments, you know, that's, that's not a big deal. The low water crossing repair is the teeth on the low water crossing, you know, we've got several of those concrete teeth that's not, been knocked out, something we're wanting to do, but that's something that quite frankly could be deferred pretty quickly, you know, we still have enough teeth on there that, that it holds its own, you know, on that end. Chisum Trail drainage repair is a sore problem, it's been there for years, it's been involved going in and widening some of the culverts, and, and dealing with some of those issues in front of three or four of those homes around the bend, just down from Stagecoach Circle.
Where, where is that, where is that now?
It's, you know, I don't know if you're familiar on Chisum Trail just down from Stagecoach Circle, but there's, there's a string of homes down there that have significant yard flooding, where it's actually gotten back up almost to the steps of the home, when they get a heavy rain because the culverts are mis-sized, probably, I'm trying to think that the hundred block would be, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I want to guess because I may all state it wrong.
That one, where McCullough lives?
It is.
Just right next to, hold up?
Yeah, you know where the guy has, the guy has the large commercial trailer on the yard that sits way back off the road, before you get down to the bend where the, the minister from Clean used to live, it's two or three houses south of that.
That's not the same place, yeah.
It's on, it's on Chisum, Robbie.
Actually, on Chisum Trail.
It's on Chisum Trail, it's on the, it's on the east side, but they've got, I mean, there's, there's some significant flooding issues over there, and quite frankly, this is, this is something that will help for, for the homes, but there's an essential need for some significant range work along that whole run of Chisum, because we're gonna, we've already had some water wrapped, and I think we'll probably have more as, as this area grows and as upstream development can do. So you've got that project, the ticket riders, we're not, we're not, by the ticket riders, we don't think that that thirty-five hundred is gonna cover the type of ticket rider that we would need, so I think that's very easily capitalized. With a PD standpoint, we can, we can, we can, you know, the rear, the front, that's replacement program, and clearly the, the five hundred dollars worth of capital in the administration is not, is committed, if we put that on hold, we don't, we don't do it. Streets is a bigger issue, and, and it's gonna come down to whether we're gonna see, you know, the county, we're still waiting for the county to, to move on Royal Streets, you know, and so, we've also talked about the possibility of Royal Streets rather than having the county do that, we've talked about that would be a potential gift project for stimulus funding, where we put some of those stimulus dollars and actually do an overlay on that street of County Dad's. It was on the county's, we have a contract with the county to do that, and it didn't make the, the recruitment list in the last twelve months, but they still have the intention that they desire to do that.
Hey Don, I have a, I have a comment.
Okay.
Sure. Yeah, we brought the, the city maintenance people online yet?
The moment, yeah, the moment contractors are on board, yes.
Okay, do they do tree trimming?
No, we have a separate tree trimmer that does that.
Okay. Well, I also think that the pace park landscaping can be put on hold too.
Yep.
Don, just listening to what, what you're saying, that Stagecoach Circle, you're talking about where the person put a lot of white rocks in the ditch there, what were you talking about?
The cost of street further than Chisum Trail from that.
What, right on the ball fields?
No, ma'am, it's, it's, it's.
On the other side.
You know where, do you know where that large, the house that has that huge gated entrance that has the?
Yeah, it's on that side, right?
On that side, and it's further going towards town, probably about five, six houses and stuff.
Isn't this Whistler's old house? For anybody who's been here forever.
Don, a lot of that flooding comes from two places, one of them really on Stagecoach Circle, the large rock side and the ditch. There are two things happening, one, the building of new little houses that are over there, and the second one, separate stream line right there in the road, comes from underneath after the ditch, the water that pours.
Hey Mike, you're making a lot of noise.
No, I'm not, what's that mean?
Well, I certainly think that the roads is one for me, and hopefully would be the second one.
And, I mean, I, I've mentioned the trailer, however, I am gonna say that without knowing where we are percentage-wise in revenue to expenses and outlay, I would, before we go saying, yeah, we're not gonna do this, we're not gonna do that, I mean, any of these, I think we ought to just put on hold, not completely cut them, and, but just understand that, okay, if we had to do something, yeah, okay, the trailer we could put off, you know, we only want to do a percent of the street improvements or tree trimming, if we, I think the drainage in the low water crossing repairs, I think those are more needed than some of the others, especially the drainage, I'm, I'm really concerned about that, so, until we know exactly where we stand, I, I think, I think we're just grabbing at straws.
I agree with that, if you're exactly right on.
Right up, you're, you're, uh.
Exactly right on.
Finally, it's a four right now, and you've got a tip right now, it's like your, your net three hundred and forty-three thousand for the better right now.
And our average sales tax revenue check is?
Ooh, you know, you're, you're probably, it, it varies obviously month to month, but you're looking at forty thousand, fifty thousand for the next couple of months, September is not a, is not a big sales tax check for us, August is not a big sales tax check for us, obviously our peak check is November, January, not playing, but I will tell you that your April, May, June check, or in that ballpark of forty, fifty.
Well, Don, while we're talking about the low water bridge, I'm gonna bring it to you first, because you know where I'm going with this. At the low water bridge, it has to be cleaned out, it is a danger in safety, and by that I mean the gravel, the buildup there, there's only, I think, three, two or three water areas that the water can flow underneath the bridge, if a child was to get in there or walk in there or break away from the parents, they're gonna be sucked in, you're gonna have dead, you have nowhere to go, and you're gonna have a health problem that is there. And I think that cleaning it out is gonna cost in the neighborhood of thirteen to fifteen thousand dollars, maybe a little bit more than that, but I do think that fixing the bridge and really making that a safe, but yet very beautiful place, I think that's very important, at least from my perspective, but I won't be here here at a time, so I wanted to get my two cents in on that.
Right, I just looked up the, I went, little drill down on your sales tax numbers, give me an example, last year we did about forty thousand dollars as far as E goes, we did a little under forty thousand dollars, about thirty-seven thousand as far as July goes, August was an unusual year, we had another net typically about forty-five thousand dollars, and then it gets, when you get to September, down to about thirty-seven thousand.
I have a question about that bridge thing, like the mayor's talking about, so, if I remember right, and I may not be remembering this correct, but wasn't it the last time we did that, the reason it was so cheap is it was a cost share?
I wasn't here, Amber, I didn't tell you about that.
I'm almost positive that we cost shared that with the golf course, and that's why it only cost like fifteen thousand dollars to the village, I think it's like, it's gonna cost a fortune to get that actually done, it was just that they offered, we offered to pay them a little bit of money to, and, but they, they took the brunt of that, so we would have to work. So we would have to work with the same people, um, Mr. Holmes and the golf course to, to, to work on that. Because I'm almost positive, um, I guess I'm like looking at faces, I think the mayor and I were the ones who were here when that happened. But, um, I'm pretty sure it was a cost share, and so that's why the, the cost to the village was really low. Um, the other thing is that the way that that bridge is, is situated, there's not a fixing that. You're gonna have to raise it and put it on pier and beam and let the water run through it to fix it. Um, it's gonna do this every few years, it's done every, I would, I mean, when I lived here, we, we used to slide through those things. You know, when the creek was up, we'd go through them and shoot you out the other side. But, um, but, uh, you know, the way that it's, it's made, it's just, it's made to hold that, that silt and sediment on the other side of it, so.
It's a dam, I mean, if you're really, if you're right, I think the ultimate solution is, and I think quite frankly, that's one of the projects we need to contemplate getting some estimates on, for stimulus projects, if we're able to qualify for those projects. Uh, you know, 'cause that, if that, once that crossing goes, or if and ever that crossing goes, uh, it's gonna put us in a, for her from an access standpoint. Uh, we feel that thing.
Change the way that that, that stream flows, I mean, it's gonna change it all the way to, to, you know, Main Street.
Absolutely, well.
When that comes out.
Yep.
Well, that, I tried to get the state department to give it, and they said it's not a state bridge. The developer who built Mill Creek built the bridge, and it's our responsibility to do whatever we want to do. But maybe there's the possibility we could go talk to the state and say, well, we need some help. And maybe they will help us. I don't wanna say build a new bridge there, because that has a lot of ambience, it's a beautiful little bridge, but somewhere down the line, we've got.
That bridge is gonna go somewhere near.
I know that, I know. You're right, go on, you can race out.
Well, I also think that, uh, didn't Billy take some of those materials out? And, uh, it was really nice to watch gravel, and there's, there's some, uh, value there if, if we can get, uh, partner with the guys and maybe sell the, uh, uh, the materials that come out too.
I think, Don, I think I have two thousand dollars that can go toward that. Somewhere in that neighborhood, I don't know how much, but.
Don, the prioritization, back to the prioritization of these things, what I'm hearing is that maybe what we need to do is just put these on hold. Uh, and, and monitor, continue to monitor, as we talked about, continue to monitor the budget. But clearly, the ones, the, the ones that I'm hearing, and correct what I'm on, since this is y'all's discussion, but I'm hearing that restroom trailers could be among first to go if we have to cut. I'm hearing that pace park landscaping should, should go. You want, is that up? I see Mike thumbs up.
I, I just. That pace park has just been neglected so long, and, you know, twenty-five hundred dollars to go down there and do something on it. And, you know, we're expecting it to be highly used in the next few months as people can get out their houses. And I know it's not, you know, life safety or anything like that, but it's just, I just can't turn it loose yet. I can delay it, I just can't turn it loose.
I'm, I'm of the opinion we don't do anything because I don't think there's a, there's an issue here.
Okay, so just let, let it sit and just continue to monitor what I'm hearing, right?
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're, you're three hundred plus, you're positive right now, your sales tax checks that normalize at, you know, forty or fifty thousand dollars a month, you could sustain that for the next six months and not touch what you've got right now, and we're gonna be outside of this budget cycle by the time that's there. I think, you know, in two months, if we, if we see a dire thing, I mean, we can put the restroom trailer on hold. We can put any of this on hold, but I think, I think it's a little overreaction right now, at this point.
Well, the first, the first thing we need to get done is, is Plaza Drive. I mean, it is just terrible, and that has got to be our number one, and that's, again, the street improvements budget right now. That we're looking at in here. And then I'm, I'm. And then I'm also in favor, if I was gonna prioritize it, my second would be the, uh, Chisholm Trail drainage. I mean, that area over there is just backed up, and we've been kicking this can down the streets, and, you know, it could eventually be a life safety thing too over there, so. Those would be the two I would execute right now if, uh, I, if I was writing the checks. The rest of these we can put onto next month, and look at it again next month.
Just keep it on hold, like Rodney said, it, it makes sense. I mean, let me ask you this, if, if for some reason the county were to come to us tomorrow and say we're ready to start, we're ready to start Royal Street. Uh, to, to do something on Royal Street, what would be y'all's reaction to that?
Well, it just depends, what's the scope of work on it? If they're gonna do another bad job like they did on the Indian Trail over there, which is gravel that just got washed off. You know, it, I'm not, I'm not in favor of that at all, it's gotta be a real good reconstruction project on oil, put it back together, not just paint it.
Got it. Rodney, what were you gonna say, I'm sorry?
I'm agree with my, I, I'd like to know the scope of the price before I say, yeah, I'd be willing to go down that road, I mean.
Yeah, I think the idea, potentially also maybe some stimulus money along with mine might be able to do a much better road. Do that road right. Okay, cool, and what we'll do is, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna move forward, we'll, we'll, uh, Ch, literally Chisholm Trail, uh, you talked about prioritization, Chisholm Trail, Selayta Plaza, we're, we're all there on that. The restroom trailer, wanna kind of hold back a little, just gonna sit and see where we're standing on that?
Maybe put it towards the end, but, um, I think, I'm hopeful, um, you know, being positive here, that the, um, the sidewalks are gonna give us like the biggest stroll ever, because people are gonna wanna come back, and, you know, we're gonna have all these sidewalks getting us up and down, and we're in where people go to the bathroom. So, um, I think that the, the restroom aspect only kind of draws people, it keeps people here, because they don't have to leave to go somewhere, you know, so. I definitely wanna keep that in there if there's any possible way to do it.
Okay, so we're gonna keep all of these even, we're just gonna figure out where we wanna hold right now or what we wanna go with the green. What I'm hearing say is we want a green light, the Chisholm Trail drainage, we want a green light, uh, Selayta Plaza, as far as the street repairs go out, that's free budget. Um, and we wanna, do we wanna green light the, the low water crossing repairs? Get that done? Think so?
I would vote for that.
Yep. Okay, is everybody there on that? Yes, sir. Okay, so Chisholm Trail, uh, restroom trailer hold, Selayta Plaza, of course, it's free, pace park landscaping.
In, in compounding off what, uh, Amber said too, you know, on the restroom trailer, you know, if we did that at the very end of the year, and possibly did beginning of the year and had it in place for stroll, then, you know, and we had Main Street done, you know, and that'll be done, that might be a, you know, a good thing, so.
Good idea. So it's not dead, it's alive, it's just later in the year, okay? Uh, pace park landscaping, what's, they got, everybody, where's everybody standing on that?
Put it on hold. On hold.
Okay, hold. Uh, ticket riders for PD on hold.
On hold.
Uh, computer for PD on hold. Yep. Uh, five thousand for vehicle replacement on hold.
Yep.
Okay. And then the public, public notice cabinet and the UPS service protectors.
With, with the UPS, are you actually protecting anything of value with it? I mean, if there's a, there's an element where if you invest three hundred bucks to save some really critical pieces of equipment, that might not be a bad thing to buy right now.
You think you need that for the server, that's pretty critical.
Yeah.
So, and, and the public notice cabinet, I think it, yeah, that, that's probably needed too, what we've got's not really efficient. But we can always hold that.
Yeah, the UPS, I, I would, uh, say go ahead and execute it.
Okay, cool. And public notice cabinet, anybody's heartbeat on that one?
Does anybody ever come up there and, and look at it?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, they do. I can hear it to you that. We, we find them out there frequently.
It seems like we're kind of lacking in that department anyways, I mean, I think that would be helpful, um, to get the information out, I mean, our website's terrible.
Yep, yeah.
So, it's, it's missing a lot of information that needs to be up there, I mean, at least that would be one where people can find information.
Got it, all right, we'll go forward on those, keep the two admin.
Yeah, I agree.
Keep it up. You've given me good input, you're moving forward, continue your mantra. Like I said, I think we've tried very conservative on our estimates going into this thing. It, we are in good shape right now, we've got a healthy fund balance, but we're trying to be as careful as possible and as cautious as possible, uh, not knowing how long this thing rolls.
If your contractor doesn't show up on Plaza Drive, uh, I'm not coming to the next meeting.
No, you and I will be out there spreading that, spreading concrete ourselves.
Don, I think, uh, and, and this is, we're gonna come to enclosure with this one, but I, I really think the restroom, I really think that, um, in the past, owning a business, a restroom would be extremely good. And so I agree with what Rodney said. I, it would be good if we could get that done sometime before the holidays of Christmas.
Got it.
Hey, Don, before we move forward, can, um, y'all ask that the, the oh-three-oh-nine number mute their phone? We're getting complaints about it on the, uh, on the chat.
Okay, I can, I can mute them.
Thank you.
You know, that's something that I have appreciated, what, what we're doing. Every now and then I see somebody's message go across here from the chat, and it's, you know, it's, it's not interrupting anything, but it lets us know where the people are. I don't think we could talk during that period, but just to be able to read, um, what's being text across that has been very interesting. Okay, let us go on, Don, do you have enough?
Yes, oh, yeah, we're good.
Okay, let's go to number C, please. Discuss and consider issues relating to the fiscal impact of COVID-nineteen pandemic on the village of Selayto.
Mayor, we've kinda had that discussion up to this point and talked about where we are, uh, so there's probably, unless you wanna have any more discussion, now it's your call.
Right, um, do y'all have any discussion you'd like to make on this? I will say this, that, so, the young lady that, which for me, I proposed, uh, lead counselor, uh, got, um, put on fourteen days this, today, because she went to the restaurant that you were talking to, I, I think that was the one. And they had a couple of people that had been COVID-nineteen, and one of them was waiting on the window and did not wear gloves, did not wear a mask, and now that, she's got a pretty good possibility of a case of COVID-nineteen. So it's still alive and well.
Have you been exposed, Mayor?
I don't know, I don't know if she has it or not, I don't, I've, I've thought to go and get it. Okay, number D. This one's mine, and I'm gonna let you guys decide this. Discuss and consider possible action, setting the date, time, and place for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, goals and priorities workshop. And this has to be longer than one or two hours to be able to do this one right. It really takes almost a whole morning.
Well, Mr. Mayor, why don't we do this when we can all meet face to face?
Say that again?
Why don't we just, yeah, because I think this is more like a face-to-face meeting instead of a virtual.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. With a lot of note-taking, a lot of writing, it truly is, and it's open to the public, it's just not for us.
Yeah, so I think, I think when we do this, we'll be calculating how many we can get together.
Okay. I agree. Anyone else wanna comment to that?
Well, Don, don't we have a certain, uh, period that we have to have our budget submitted?
That's what we do, and, and, uh, you know, we typically try to get that submitted, uh, a little bit earlier than that deadline, but it's late in the summer. And we have an obligation to get that in. It has to be approved, obviously, by the end of September, uh, but there are hearings that have to take place and those types of things, but, uh, you know, you, we typically try to get that done, uh, late July, early August.
So, um, uh, as, as Alderman Cole said, and, uh, the mayor said, that if we wanna do this face-to-face, uh, we might not be able to do it until, uh, the end of June or the first of July, would that interfere with our, our requirement to get our budget submitted?
No, shouldn't, shouldn't, 'cause keep in mind, you're, there, there's a deliberative process once the budget's submitted. So you're gonna have the ability to make changes all the way up until the thirtieth of September on that budget, so that should work if, if you're not able to get together face-to-face till July.
Great, I'm all good with that.
Do you want a date, you wanna set a date, Don, on this?
No, you need to wait until you're, you know when you're able to get together and where you're kind of putting together. So just.
Here, what? Put that on the agenda the next time around.
We can do that.
Okay, very well. All right, we've got an addendum, but before we do that, we go to E. Discuss and consider possible action regarding the continued use of the virtual meeting format for Selayto Board of Alderman Meetings. Discussion is now open.
Kind of sort of one of the same one we just talked about, we don't, we don't know when. I don't know. Who knows?
I just say we keep it, keep pushing it every meeting until we decide that it's a good time to start back. Gives us the opportunity to start back that way, so.
Well, your special meeting Wednesday will be virtual, and your next regular meeting will be virtual. On that agenda to go from there, right?
Right, so not this coming meeting, but like the next regular meeting, I guess we have it on that, that agenda.
Right, but, 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 Don, the, uh, the question I have is, can we legally have, uh, meetings and meet all the social distancing requirements by law at this time, or, uh, maybe at the next meeting?
You know, the answer to that question is I think you can.
'Cause, 'cause I've noticed that some of the, I think some of the other, uh, city councils are already meeting face-to-face. But I want us to be where everybody's comfortable doing it, and I don't want, uh, us to have to, uh, sit across from the room from each other and only have like one or two people that can attend, because then that really won't be filmed and, or on Zoom or something, so. Uh, you know, I really want this to be as transparent as possible, and people have as much a chance to participate as possible too. And of course, uh, with the village, um, staff and elected officials as comfortable as they can be with, um, uh, with the current virus situation.
So, Mike, we, we probably set it up like we had, you know, right before we ended up going virtual, remember how the chairs were all spread out?
Right.
Probably set it up in that fashion, which limited our capacity to, maybe fifteen, fifteen people, twenty people, the way it looked, the way it worked out, but and then, if, with people wearing masks, you know, but, uh, you know, I think that's gonna be important too. Uh, we've got plenty of hand sanitizer for folks to assist in that, in that environment. If we need it, the, the bigger concern is making sure you get separated at the dials, and I think there are some ways to do that by, by tiering you guys to the point where, you know, three of y'all are up top, and then the other three could sit lower with some separation, and then the audience gets moved back a little bit, so I think there's some ways to do it, but again, it's your comfort level on what you wanna do.
Let's do that, let's do that.
I'm comfortable doing that right now, if, but if anybody. I'm comfortable doing that right now, if, but if anybody on the board has any issue with it, I, you know, I'm not comfortable making somebody do that or forcing them to.
Well, this is Cole, I agree with you, Mike. I'm ready to do it.
What we have to do at Fort Hood now when we have a meeting is that the chairs have to be six feet apart, and you have to wear a mask. And that's pretty much what we have to do, and so do your developers. Amber, what do you have to do? What about y'all? Do y'all have to do that?
We're not allowed to be back yet. I don't know.
No, okay, wow, nice.
Our office is still closed, and uh and uh with a compromised immune system, I don't even know when my start back date yet is, so I wouldn't be able to go either.
That's what we have to do, and it's mandatory. I think that's what the governor said too.
Well, let's do that. Let's schedule our junior lead-up meeting. Uh we'll go three up top, three down low with a mask, and let's all put it up and get down to business.
I'm not wearing a mask, not even. Never.
Amber, Amber's, if Amber's not comfortable going at all, then I don't think we should be meeting.
I'll be, I mean, I prefer you and everyone else and do the way, but I'm gonna still be here.
Okay, so we'll get this canned down the street. I'm, I mean, I'm perfectly good with that.
Okay, so we won't go virtual next meeting, and we'll put the item on that agenda and decide for the next meeting. Okay?
Sounds, okay, let us now go to the addendum. It's number F of six, discussion and possible action. Discuss and consider possible action authorizing the expenditure of funds for preliminary design work relating to the proposed development of a stepping stone path across Salado Creek. Mike?
Uh yes, uh Mayor, you, I've reached this before, and during the COVID outbreak, it sort of got put on a back burner. But then, since we've had the uh the critical habitat issue came up, it's been put on the front burner again. And so Don and I met with a couple of the businesses down in the uh uh in the area along Royal. And uh they are still highly interested in partnering with the village to put stepping stones across the creek. And uh we have, I have also briefly, very briefly, visited with Keep Salado Beautiful, and they're going to uh also want to be involved in this, so if they can, and I promised them that they'd be able to, to see what uh the final outcome is gonna be before its place, so that they have an idea of what it's gonna look like, and so we can have a really nice uh pathway that you can get from Pace Park over to uh the Royal Street area around Big Boil is where we hope to have it come in. And uh it's not gonna be small stepping stones, it's not gonna be, looks like stepping stones. We want to make this a natural feature that somebody can walk along in it, so it can be like a ten foot uh wide stone with channels cut in it where water can go through it. And Don suggested that we put sawteeth on the bottom of it, so that water can go underneath them too. And then the businesses have suggested that we actually anchor the the stones in place using some kind of engineering method. And so uh anyway, it has a lot of interest in getting done, and the the proposed business that we have, a deal that we're looking at is that the city will do the uh engineering and the survey work, not survey, but the uh uh engineering and the regulatory requirements, and we'll 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 herd that, and if they'll, they'll do all of the other inserting the stones, purchasing the stones, and installing the stones. So that's sort of the deal that we're looking at. And um a lot of interest in it, and and the the way the idea was really developed was just taking a walk alongside the uh the belt and a river down there by the gin, and you have lots of people in there, like right now we have lots of people there, but uh you know, we want to give them a place to sit, a place that we can uh uh that they can uh, you know, just really go down there and enjoy the creek feature. And it's gonna be complicated with the environmental aspects that's coming up, you know, we might have to do something there, but we really don't know why. But uh all this is hopefully gonna be tackled with the regulatory requirements and with the uh the design work that we're gonna try to put together. So today I'm just coming in and and just giving you an update on this, and we're, and Don uh is about ready to pull the trigger and expend funds if we have approval to do this. And so since I've been so uh tied to the hip on this and really a proponent for this, I think I'm gonna back out of it and let y'all talk about it and and make a decision whether you want to do it, so I'm not gonna vote, I'm just, I've made myself's pitch, and I think that's what I'm gonna do.
Okay. Well, will you be willing to answer questions?
Uh me and Don, you know, we could, if it's hard, I'm gonna let him answer it. If it's easy, I'll take it.
Okay. Thanks. Questions for the senator?
Okay, so a couple of things. First of all, we're talking about down um at the low water bridge having to clean out silt. Which you're actually essentially putting the exact same type of feature there that you will be having, you know, that's already there at the at the low water crossing, so. That's my biggest concern, I think, is the the level of siltation that's gonna be occurring. It's going to be causing a damming effect. But bigger than that, you know, you've got to think about whatever your stream flow is going through there during normal flow event, but during high flow or like those pressure flow event, it's gonna break off that rock. And so you're going to have a lot more meandering of the stream in that area and a lot of undermining. So, you know, basically over there by the uh, on the stagecoach side, by where Serena is now, all those rocks, and we keep having to put fill behind them, because there's like, there's a bunch of undermining behind the rocks, and they're kind of falling in. And I realize it hasn't been exactly engineered, but on that side, but they are anchored. And so you're, if you're anchoring a point into a creek that naturally meanders over time, um what's to say that those stepping stones are gonna be in the right place next time we have a flood? Well, it's highly unlikely, because you know, your your creek bed is gonna move a little bit, it always does. And so that, I guess, is one of my bigger concerns. Plus, it's actually drawing people to an area that we're trying, that, well, first of all, there's gonna be a potential critical habitat, and we're trying to protect so that over time, um we don't see the threatened salamander going into being, you know, endangered because of people directly impacting in that that feature. So I'm just afraid that it's drawing people in even even more than they're already are right now. Those are my biggest concerns. Um have y'all thought about anything to address those?
Mike, you want to use that?
No, I'll take that one. Those are easy questions. The uh the the way we're going to approach this is that as part of the engineering, like we're gonna do some water modeling, so we'll actually be able to see where the water's gonna flow and how it's gonna impact the areas over there. And so this, that should handle how the silt will be backed up or not backed up. And it's sort of similar to what they did over at uh the Beltin area. If you go look there, there's no silt backed up, you know, and I've I've been there after big rains, and yes, there's some gravel and stuff that looks like the village has to go, or the the belt has to go in and clean up. But uh that's that's typical of any major flood that you have. Um the other question was, uh let's see, the silt, and uh the other thing about the critical habitat, uh Don and I were talking, and and when we start, he's already been talking to Texas Parks and Wildlife about it, and they said it can be done. And so we also want to try to use, like I'm saying earlier about the sawtooth, where water actually can go underneath the uh the rocks, that could actually be used as a building habitat for the salamander. And you know, it's it's gonna be compatible with the other areas the little guys hang out at, so you know, we are looking at that, and that is some consideration that we hopefully will be uh uh taking, addressing during the design and the water study model.
Well, Amber, the the kind of dovetailing what Mike's talking about, we also see, we've talked to the groundwater district about this. It could potentially be an educational project too. You could you could make, you could build an educational component into it, because you're putting people out in the middle of the spring, like to the point that they might be able to view springs and and other species and things like that, so. Uh the thought process is that 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 maybe you could build an educational component in on signage and and make an educational experience, not just a way to get back and forth across the farm.
Yeah, and you know, I didn't really explain the vision, but the vision is people can come and park at Pace Park, they'll walk down maybe a crushed gravel driveway to get to where the the stepping stones are, and they go across the stepping stones, and at night come back, and the vendors have actually said they want to put some string lights across it so it'd be lit, so they can come back and and they really want to uh make it to where that that's the preferred parking in that area. And as a part of that, we're probably gonna have to, and we've already talked about it, build an ADA method to get across, and that will be used in the existing Main Street Bridge, you know, where you can actually push a wheelchair across that. But this will get a lot of the traffic off of Main Street Bridge that uh we really don't want.
So hey, Mike, this is Cole. I got a question for you. I mean, that that's a good point. So is this gonna be acceptable? Easily acceptable during the stroll, or is it something that's gonna take people off the beaten path?
Uh I see that during the stroll, that it could, we could be parking a lot of our vehicles down there in the Pace Park area and use it to to stage people at the stroll. And that, you know, if we shut down the road, uh Main Street Road, we'll have to find a way that we can get people into Pace Park, but uh you know, it just opens up a lot of opportunities down there to relieve some of the congestion at the parking.
Yeah, it was, because during the last stroll, uh I was doing the the citizen on patrol thing, I spent pretty much all night making, you know, taking rollers, you know, baby strollers up the middle of Main Street across the bridge, because there was no way for two-way traffic to flow there.
Right.
It is been, trying to light this thing at night too.
Yeah. But there's a big interest in, you know, shutting down all of Main Street, you know, all the way from one end to the other for the stroll this year. I've heard that being discussed, and I think they're gonna be bringing some proposals to us. Uh you know, the COVID thing, I think, sort of slowed down everybody, but uh this year's stroll could be huge.
Yeah, it could be beautiful.
Mike, do y'all have, do you have a cost estimate of what this is gonna cost?
Yeah, we're looking at our out-of-pocket costs, where the village is gonna be about uh not to exceed eighty-five hundred dollars.
That's for the preliminary engineering.
Yep.
The preliminary what?
The preliminary engineering. So that's gonna be uh running, heading the process of getting in communication with the permitting agencies, developing schematic drawings, uh doing, you know, some some preliminary design work to try to identify the issues and hurdles that we're gonna have to tackle when we get into design.
Are there going to be partners in this from businesses with the village? Is there, is there amount of money that will be divided out?
Well, we're, the agreement, uh the honor of the agreement that we have got in place so far is that we'll do the the regulatory and the engineering work on on this project, and that the uh businesses will buy the stones, install the stones, install the lights across the creek, and help us maintain it, and it's also been discussed, is they want this to be a really nice feature that they can have people funneled into Royal Street. And uh they've been really good partners, and and the stones that we're actually talking about is actually a waste stone, it's sort of a cap that you find out there in the uh uh the quarries in the the local area. They peel off the cap stone, and they set it to the side, and then they start digging out quarry in the white stone, uh the white limestone, which is where they make their money. So it's, you know, dollar-wise, the materials are not gonna be that expensive, and uh also installation is not gonna be really that critical either, so. It's gonna be a pretty good deal, I think, for both the village and for the businesses.
And the insurance if somebody is hurt walking across it? Would we, would we have to furnish the insurance, or how would that work?
Yes, sir. That will be part of my umbrella coverage. It will be the village's responsibility until it gets to the uh the business owner's property line, and then his insurance will take over.
Don, I'm gonna ask one of Mike's famous questions. Has legal looked at this and and given any indication as to the responsibilities that we would be under?
No, I mean, they're pretty basic responsibilities. We know what we're gonna be under from the standpoint of looking at liability. We'll have, we'll have necessary agreements been placed with the adjacent property owners, uh that's, you know, it's the goal or the 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 protection is gonna come in the design and engineering of it. You know, and and making sure that these things.
Other questions for Don, please?
Uh I got, I got one question, Don, I just thought of it, and I don't mean to sound like a, like a troublemaker, but early on in the meeting tonight, we talked about giving money back to businesses because of hurting, and now we're having businesses donate to build this bridge, which I think is a great idea. I think they should be boarded properly, or we're gonna light a firestorm.
I think they're the proponents, correct? We're just assisting in this, but they were the ones that were actually wanting to do it, so we're not mandating it by any means. I think it's just, if people want, wanted to do it, but they needed our assistance or wanted us to kind of help front the legwork on the front end, but it's it's their project. I do have a a concern about um the maintenance side of it. So if um we're gonna allow the businesses to assist us with maintenance, we're just gonna have to make sure that there's nobody in there that's wanting to say like, oh, well, you know, it silted in after that last flood, we're just gonna get in there with the Bobcat and clean it out really quick, because it's absolutely not that way. And we've gotten our hands tied with it before, so everybody's gonna have to be very much aware that there's a permitting process to be able to go in there and maintain it.
Well, I've seen the village uh really taking the responsibility for the maintenance and for items like that of the stones themselves. And then, of course, you know, where the property line is, the village, uh the business owners would be taking care of their site too. If they put a ramp down to it, you know, on their property and it gets washed out, of course, that's gonna be the the business's responsibility to replace.
And I think the other thing, Amber, to delve in and add on, and that is the fact that much like when we construct the waste guard lines, the construction in this, and any construction related to this, there's gonna have to be monitored construction. Uh I'm talking about monitored through environmental uh resources and things like that. I, we're not able to go in, just like you said, do work in that creek without proper permits in place, but also more importantly, the proper onsite monitoring during construction.
Right, and I mean, we've got to be careful with how it is gonna cause um us to have to do on the front end too. Like, if you remember, last time we dug that ditch and it wasn't very deep for the um the pipe that went through, we had to have the ERT study done, which supports a small fortune to be able to do. So we want to make sure that um if we're planning on drilling at all within that, that we know what's underneath it ahead of time, because you can't like drill into a void or anything like that. And we know there's a lot of voids right there.
Yeah, we're aware of that. We just, we just don't need to to do the engineering to figure out whether they're gonna have to put a steel rod and epoxy it, or you know, just maybe put some uh high, high strength concrete around the edges on one of them, one side or something to keep it, so we'll let the engineers address that.
Any other questions or comments either to Mike or Don? What would you prefer? Would you like for us to have a motion that said, continue looking into it? Or what are we looking for here, Mike?
We're looking for a motion for you to authorize the expenditure of funds not to exceed eighty-five hundred dollars for preliminary engineering for the project.
So move.
Second.
Hold on a second here, I gotta think about this for a moment. Okay, the motion has been made, and it has been discussed, please.
I do ask that after the preliminary engineering work is done, before then we move forward with the project, that we have a chance to review the engineering work and make sure that we're all comfortable moving forward with it. So I'm okay with the front end work, but I just want to make sure we're good with it before we move on.
The whole, the whole, you know, the whole concept would be actually to bring you, you're you're gonna approve the steps of the project to move forward, but we need to take the first steps and get an idea of what we're looking at.
You know, we're just, we're just approving the preliminary design work, we're not approving any of the work, right?
Right.
And I hope, Don, that you would be in my, that you all would be in conversation with Fish and Ball. Because that is, that is a very, very, those guys don't fool around. Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second to it. Any more discussion on it? If not, I'll entertain a question.
Question.
A question has been called. John Cole. John Cole. Yes or no?
No, no.
Um, Amber?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Michael?
Epstein?
You did thing, that is correct. Okay, so it is a three, two, it's a two to one vote. Two for, one against.
Just a majority vote, right?
Yeah, just a majority vote.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
Okay. Passes. All right, now that we got the last one here. I apologize for being a long meeting, but it's been a good meeting. G, discuss and consider possible action. Approving the route for the Salado High School graduation parade on Saturday, May twenty-third, twenty-twenty. Don?
Mayor, let me, uh, let me brief you very quickly on this. Uh, we've approached by some parents of some seniors, uh, interested in, in adding some recognition for the senior graduates in light of what they've been going through with COVID. Uh, they wanted to hold the Main Street parade initially and they realized it was not gonna be finished at that time. Uh, so they were looking at alternative routes. We've closed Williams Road, which they jumped on, thought that was a great idea. Uh, and so they're, they're proposing right now that they would have a parade on Saturday morning, uh, around ten o'clock, uh, and until about eleven o'clock. And basically, uh, the seniors would gather at High School Parking Lot, drive down to Williams Road. Some of them probably will turn onto West Village and make it a grainer parade. But we're not gonna close down West Village and Slade the school, uh, logistically. There are too many residents on, on those streets to do that. Um, we will be providing, uh, traffic control in addition to the constable's office. The fire department will participate in that. I, I wanna add, and that is, we also subsequent to this notice and, and posting received word that, uh, there's gonna be a kindergarten graduation parade and they wanna follow the same routes. Uh, but that will take place a week from now. So with your approval tonight, if, if you choose to approve, we'd ask that you consider approval of, uh, of the route for, for the High School Graduation Parade and any future parades that may be earmarked for graduation this school year, uh, to use. So with that, we recommend approval now.
All right, uh, Don, one more time. When you gave the route, uh, it broke up at least on my computer. Could you tell me the route again, please?
The route is basically from, uh, the High School Parking Lot on to Williams Road, all the way down to Williams Road and it will end at West Village Road.
Discuss, uh, questions to Don, please.
And Don, the kindergarten and graduation thing, is that gonna be on the thirtieth?
Yes, sir, I believe it's next Friday, if I'm not mistaken, a week from now.
I think the twenty-ninth, okay.
And theirs, theirs is gonna be in the evening, from what I understand.
Other questions, please, to Don? I'll entertain a motion then.
I'll move, we approve the route for Slade High Graduation is presented and also the following kindergarten graduation will be held, uh, within ten days after that, on the same route.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded. Discussion, please.
Question.
Who has been called? Um, John?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Uh, Mike?
Yes.
And Rodney?
Yes.
Passes. Well, that included, that is before. I do not want you to leave yet. It's for everyone to hear. Today, Don received a telephone call. And the telephone call was simply this. I, Frank Coachman, resigns from the Board of Aldermen and from the mayor's race. I talked to Frank this afternoon. And I said, Frank, I understand, but would you please explain your reasoning for this? He said, yes. He said, my job, and he works for the state of Texas, has become so complicated and big because of COVID nineteen and schools being closed and trying to get all the bands and everything together on one sheet so that they can begin again this fall and go with it. The second reason that he gave was because he owns a business from town and like everyone else, gotta get the customers back and do the work that's necessary to rebuild the economy of his store. I said, are you absolutely sure of this? And he said, yes, I am sure of this. We cannot do anything about it tonight. Our next meeting will be the time when we will vote to accept that resignation. It has to be on the Board of Aldermen's agenda. Don, would you like to add anything to that?
No, sir, it, it was actually a letter I got from him on a personal visit as opposed to a phone call. That's exactly right, and that was a notification that he was stepping down. Uh, you do need to take formal action on this letter of resignation, so it'll be placed on your first meeting in June. Uh, and then you can have discussion about how you wanna deal with that particular vacancy. Obviously, you're gonna need to have a new mayor for town, uh, you know, if, if he currently serves in that capacity. And then you have to position this board, uh, to decide how you wanna deal with the vacancy between now and at this stage, it looks like November, uh, when, when the next election will be held. Uh, you have a couple of options in, in that standpoint. You can leave the position vacant, you can fill the position, uh, until the term comes to an end. So, uh, obviously don't have enough time to call special elections, so those are really the two options that exist at this point. I think the thing to keep in mind, as we've talked before, and that is, he has resigned. Uh, but keep in mind, there's that weird constitutional provision that says that, you know, he technically still is the sitting alderman until such time as the successor is named and seated. Qual, I think the word is a qualified.
Successful.
So, um, mind that he, he has indicated he does not have any time to do that. And he, he's indicated an interest in my discussion with him today. Uh, he's indicated an interest in maybe helping out some committee work. Uh, but he said he doesn't think he's gonna have the time to do that until the spring of next year, just because of what he's dealing with with COVID. Um, he said that he was, uh, very competent, you know, in, in, in the board and in their ability to move forward. His concern was he was just absolutely unable to give at the time that it needed, uh, based on his work situation and his maybe for not his business situation. Uh, so we'll have it on the agenda for acceptance and, uh, for discussion regarding how you wanna deal with the vacancy. Uh, listen, Mike.
I'm okay.
Okay, well then with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Come in.
Please, sir, sir.
Again.
Let's go.